We need one call.
I'll call you.
Hi Charlie.
Hey Bob.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Okay.
I didn't make it to Mitchell Valley.
Alright folks, it is four thirty, I want to call the meeting to order please. Public information, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call please.
Meyer.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Knapper.
Yes.
Reisig.
Yes.
Blue.
Yes.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record for which it stands, one nation, ununderstood, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Board, anything you'd like to change? Okay, if not, then entertain a motion for approval.
Excuse me.
We expect you to call?
I've got reasons, Sarah joining for their agenda item.
Which is?
The Department of Revenue, Scottsbluff County.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Paris.
Okay, we, we're just...
Alright, hi Kelly.
Okay, so we're just getting started and you're about fifth on the agenda, fourth or fifth, so I'll let you know when we're ready, thanks.
Okay.
That's Sarah, Scott and Ruth Swanson joining.
So, do I have a motion for approval?
I move to be approved.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, record your votes.
Go ahead, sorry. Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody that the board does serve the right to enter into a closed session anytime that we feel it is necessary. We do have an executive session scheduled at the end of the underhold business. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, before we move into Roden Bridge, I just want to take a minute to thank some folks. Last week was a little bit tough here in the administration building. We had our assessor's office went through some changes and I want to publicly thank, she's not here, Lisa Ryan, our accounts management accountant, Jean Bauer out of the D.D.'s office, Kina out of Kelly's office, Amanda out of the mapping, and Ashley for all her hard work. I know I'm gonna forget somebody. Who else? Who else stepped up and gave us a hand to kind of keep that office up and running? We're not, oh, and the State Department of Revenue, and Mark Luce for stepping in and helping out. As I say, we've had, we've had a few changes and hopefully we're gonna get it up and running and do some good things down there, but I wanna, I just want to publicly thank everybody for stepping up to the plate, helping us out, and we do appreciate everybody's help. And we'll, we'll get it up and going. Kelly, thank you for your help also, we appreciate that. Okay, moving on to Roden Bridge, Mr. Baird.
Good afternoon. So, we are on here to approve the purchase of a motor grader. I guess I'll give you a little background on how this came to be. Back in March, when we were losing graders left and right because of the storms, we needed a motor grader and NMC happened to waltz into one of our foreman meetings that day and we were discussing our shortage of motor graders and they said they had one that they could lease to us. We were interested, it was eighty-five hundred bucks a month. And we were down, at that time, we had one major one down, like three others down, so yeah, we jumped on the deal. At the end of the six-month lease, you know, we have the option to purchase, is that what they gave us. So, we've been leasing this motor grader since March. September is here and the lease is coming up on it. So, the payoff amount for the motor grader to purchase is a hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. We paid in forty-two thousand five hundred in rental. It's two thousand six...
Payoff again?
One hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. I did advertise this in the paper with the affidavit, it was advertised in August nineteenth is what they have down, is they advertised that we were taking bids, informal bids for a motor grader. Received no other bids other than the leased grader that we were leasing.
Okay, Steve explained, you say you received no other bids. Nobody else had a, had a machine that was with those hours and all that kind of stuff, okay?
I would assume they didn't put anything in, if they did, they didn't bid it, but I would assume they probably didn't have anything with that low of hours, they're pretty tough to find.
And we have the machine on site, we've been using it?
Yes, been using it for the last six months. We've put about three hundred hours on it, three hundred and twenty hours on it since we first picked it up, it's been working great, so...
Okay, to buy another machine like this one, what, what would the cost be or similar?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
For a new one?
For a new one.
For a new one?
Yeah. So, this is a heck of a deal, I guess, is what I would say.
What are the total hours again?
Um, it has thirty-four twenty on it today, this morning when I went out and looked at it.
Thir- three thou-
Three thousand four hundred twenty.
Okay. Is that about normal usage or low, high, what?
It's a two thousand sixteen, so that's low.
That's low, low.
I would say that's low.
Okay.
We have two other machines, just like this, images of them that were purchased new back in two thousand sixteen and they've been working great too, so...
How many hours did those have on them?
They were new.
Right, what are their hours to them?
There are, one's about nine thousand, one's ten thousand. The one in Gearing's at ninety-five, or excuse me, ninety-six twenty-three, and the one in Mitchell is at ten thousand one.
And how old are those?
Those are two thousand sixteen, just like this one, they're all the same.
During, during the leasing period, what kind of, was there any work done on it or is there anything that needs to be done to it?
Air conditioning, I believe, the only thing, air conditioning was the only thing that was fixed.
Is there anything that needs to be done to them now?
No.
So, we're basically getting relatively new machine then?
Yeah.
In, in your opinion?
Yes.
Now, what percentage of the lease applied to that?
All of it.
All the lease?
Yeah, all the lease applied to the purchase.
All the lease payments?
Yes.
Is there any warranty left on it now?
No.
Not on the sixteen?
No.
Not on sixteen, okay.
Years are gone by, even though the hours are low, the years have gone by.
You know, it seems to me that, that we're, we've got a good machine for a good price and it ended up being a good deal. The, just trying to figure out the process here and how does that work? I suppose, so you put something in the paper, gave other companies an option to bid?
Yes.
And I know we don't have copies of that, of whatever you put in the paper, but the...
Pretty much just an ad saying the road department is taking bids for a two thousand sixteen...
Motor grader.
Cat motor grader, with this, with, under this many hours and to come to the office for the additional specs. It's just an informal notice. According to the county handbook, for special purchases or sale-type prices, we can do an informal notice without having to go through the three weeks of bid notice and the, I guess more notice, I guess, if you want to call it that.
So...
It allows counties to purchase items. When the county itself is a bidder, take advantage of special pricing available for a short period of time. So, I mean, if this ever comes up again, for whatever, we can certainly pursue it again. Getting one of these a year would be great.
Well, I, I think that it causes us to be able to, yeah, get a good deal on a... The fact that all a hundred percent of the lease payments apply makes a big, big difference to me. But I just want to be sure that in the process that we're given a fair chance to everyone.
I agree.
And, you know, I always used to say that we want to specify specific enough to get what we want, but general enough that we get more than one bid. General enough that we can, yeah, hopefully get bids from two or three maybe. And I realize, I think probably the language here that, probably, I don't think anyone else could have given us a bid, but when we specifically, in this case, say Caterpillar, then that narrows that bid down a whole lot, right?
It does, but I believe those, if you're referring to some others, I know they've had, they have access to those too.
Right, because it's huge.
But if we open it up that much more, then we're, you could be kicking the one out that you've paid a lease on. You see what I'm saying, I mean, you, so that's why the bid was...
I think that has to be part of the price.
Specific to what we were looking for.
Part of the price would be that, that that would be considered and that...
So, you'd lose that lease money then?
Yes.
Right. Well, you would, as long as you're still buying something for the...
Hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Less the forty-two.
Less, yeah, less the forty-two.
Does the one eighty-three already have the forty-two out?
Yes.
Okay, so if we were buying something for one eighty-three, then it's comparable, right?
Yeah.
The last blade we bought before I got on the board was three hundred, what, three twenty-five, that last blade you guys bought?
I believe so, yeah.
I understand, again, I, I think we're getting a good deal here. I'm happy with that, the fact we're getting a good deal. I just want to be sure we're doing it in a fair way that...
I think with the availability of machinery, it's tough for any other dealer to even find a machine with that low of hours.
Right, and that's...
Most of them...
I'm trusting that's why we didn't get any others, is because no one else had something in that amount of hours, in that kind of a price.
And I did talk to Travis from the competitor and he had nothing with that low of hours. So...
Local competitor?
Yes.
So, that, that year, you're looking, you almost said seven thousand hours or more, something like that?
Yeah, any, well, it's, even newer ones are gonna be, have that many hours on them, they're just tough to find.
Yeah.
Using machines with low hours on them like that. When you get up to seven, eight, nine thousand hours, I just seem afraid away from them, they're getting, you know, a little more wear off. So, when we come across something like this, it's tough to find them.
And we've been using this machine, operators know the machine.
Yep.
We've got an investment in this machine, so...
The operator in this machine loves it, thrilled to death with it, so...
It already has little stick, pictures in, in there, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Little, little Christmas tree hanging there already, alright.
Yeah.
I got it.
So...
So, what kind of a motion do we need for this?
I would, I would move that we would approve the purchase by, before I do that, never mind, it's already in our budget.
Yes, that's what we were talking about in the budgets.
Budgets for last, okay.
Yes.
I would, I would entertain a motion for approval of the, the price of the hundred and eighty-three and whatever. I, I wrote down a hundred and eighty-three thousand, I didn't put the rest of it down, I'm sorry.
Nine one six, nine six seven.
Yes, hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and sixteen and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for that number.
I'll second, I will make the motion, sorry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion, questions? Steve, thank you for your work on that, appreciate that. Harry Nun, would you record your vote please?
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you.
On behalf of NMC, thank you very much.
Well, you're very welcome. Alright. Next item in general is discussed, consider the approval of the reassignment of the ambulance contract. With us tonight is Randy Meiner, President of Valley Ambulance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Randy Meiner, I'm the President of Valley Ambulance Services Incorporated. So, what we're gonna ask you tonight is for your vote to affirmatively move or reassign the contract from Valley Ambulance to Regional West Medical Center. But before I formally ask you that, just want to go back in history and give you, make sure everybody's up to speed with everything. So, the ambulance contract that you have in front of you actually started in nineteen seventy-four and it was amended cost-wise in nineteen eighty-four and has not changed anything as far as monetary value since nineteen eighty-four. There was a change to it about eight years ago and that's when the Nebraska legislation moved that ambulance service was essential service to be declared the same as police or fire. And there were just some things going on between eight and twelve years ago throughout our country that, that moved that into essential services. Now, that doesn't change anything as far as what Scottsbluff County has because Scottsbluff County has always taken the stance that ambulance service was essential and to make sure that it was provided throughout the community. Since nineteen, since nineteen eighty-two, we have worked to make sure that we enhanced our program from basic life support to advanced life support. So, with advanced life support on layman's terms, what you're basically doing is making sure that you're bringing part of the first ten minutes or so of the emergency room to the patient rather than trying to get the patient to the emergency room. And what we're finding out statistically across the nation is that the patients, especially the cardiac patients and stroke patients, the ones that come in by ambulance via advanced life support have a less hospital stay, like the stay is less, they do better, they have a better recovery. And that is because you've got high-quality trained professionals that are bringing that first ten minutes of emergency room to those patients. The hospital, of course, over the years has added in the trauma center, Level Two Trauma Center, and with that, first of all, they brought in the helicopter and then the fixed wing into that program that we work in tandem. With the ambulance service, the ambulance in Scottsbluff County, we will do about five thousand calls per year is the calls that we, we answer. We do have, we're set up as a two-tier system and in a two-tier system, we're looking for volunteers, especially the ones that have ambulances, to, if at all possible, to get on scene first, stop the bleed, get CPR started, so that when we get there, we can go right into the advanced life support mode. So, the Village of Lyman has an ambulance, the Village of Moro has an ambulance, the Village, or City of Mitchell has an ambulance and the military fire department has an ambulance. With that, first part of two thousand twenty-three, so the first half of two thousand twenty-three, those departments combined answer about a hundred and ninety calls roughly, give or take a little bit. With that, we have agreements with every one of them to respond with them simultaneously to make sure that an ambulance is coming because we know how hard it is for the volunteers in the areas. A lot of them don't work in the town in which they live and it's not always possible for them to get through together to respond. So, even though it's coming out of Scottsbluff or Gearing, because we have stations in both places, we have a station in Gearing and a station in Scottsbluff, we make sure that an ambulance is coming to you. Fifty percent of the time of those calls, we're coming out of Scottsbluff or Gearing and we are the ones that are either the first on scene or transporting the patient. And, and that works fine because we make sure that somebody's coming to the scene, we get things started and get things moving in the right direction. About, I know in the, the current agreement, there's some question about that nine-one-one and dispatching services will be provided, that's part of the agreement, always has been part of the agreement. And that's pretty much standard across the nation with that. One thing that you've got to be careful of is that you're not, with the anti-kickback laws with the United States, especially with Medicare and Medicaid regulations, because in this agreement, which is unique to a lot of them, this says that we will maintain federal requirements according to Medicare and Medicaid. Most of the time, that's not in an agreement, it is in ours. Because that's important, because our population is more aged. With that, you can't pay somebody to receive a call or to pay for service. So, we, we try and stay away from that, so it's never questionable. So, we've never put in that it was part of, that we would pay for dispatching services because we never want to get into that question of is it part of the anti-kickback or not. The other thing is, we've never asked for an increase, so this kind of goes along with it as volumes go up. The other thing that we're looking at is, we do have, through our transfer center, only about fifty percent of our volume of the five thousand calls actually comes through the nine-one-one center. The rest of it comes in to us direct and our ambulances are dispatched through that. And years ago, I was part of the, the group as the mayor of Scottsbluff in working on the communication network and the software and the hardware and everything. And each agency was responsible for their hardware. And the medical side of things provides the radios to the nine-one-one center and the system of which it functions in. And we have provided that equipment and that maintenance on that equipment to make sure that not only locally, but the entire region has access to those medical frequencies and everything to be able to get into all the hospitals throughout the region. Some things I'm very excited about is both boards of Valley Ambulance and the hospital have agreed to move forward and put together agreements to make this work. The employees are what really makes it work and the employees all, all are, stay with the organization, so nothing changes there. And the other thing that I think, there's two things that I'm really excited about. One is, I've been doing this for forty-four years and I've never seen the hospital have an executive person that was over top of the emergency room, the ground ambulances and the flight program. And that's unusual, you don't find that across the, the United States. That's gonna be unique and that is so essential because, as I said earlier, ambulance service is essential service and it is one hundred percent public safety, but it's also one hundred percent medical and it has to comply with all the medical regulations. And by having the emergency room and the air and the ground component all under one person that can oversee that, that is huge, that's a huge move, step forward for providing and, and actually enhancing services in Scottsbluff County. The other thing that I'm very excited about is Mel McNay is the interim CEO of Regional West Medical Center. I'm gonna ask him to come up because he's one of the drivers that's looking at switching the EMR, the medical, emergency, or the electronic medical record at the hospital. And with doing that, we'll be able to incorporate the EMS record into that and make that flow better. So, that means that if for some reason you have to go from Scottsbluff to a stroke center like in Colorado, that medical record is gonna be more tied together, be able to follow you rather than ending up with, I'll have to wait for ten minutes so I can print off all this paperwork that has to go with you and then I, you gotta say it, you got human component of I'm touching it, somebody else touching it, four or five people, and then hoping that it gets okay at the other end. Because time is critical in those situations, especially a stroke patient and the things that they can do at, at the, the level one stroke centers is amazing. But that's gonna be critical and that's, that's all gonna be coming into place. I'm very excited about those two things. Those things can't really happen without having everything kind of combined together under, under one roof so that we're not moving stuff between two different corporations, so... So, we will be asking you for your vote to be able to just reassign the contract as it is. There's a little less than three years left on it. Renegotiate it at the end of three years, that, that's what we've been doing for a long time. But right now, for, to make sure that everything stays the same and gets better, would be to reassign it. I would ask Mel McNay if he would come up as the CEO and then I'll be here for you if you've got any questions or something.
Thanks, Randy. First of all, Mel McNay, actually my address is thirty-seven eleven Avenue B, which is the hospital, right now anyway. First, I'd be really remiss if I didn't thank Randy for his years of service to Scottsbluff County, but not only Scottsbluff County, but the whole region. I started in mid-December, working as interim CEO at Regional West. Randy approached me shortly after and asked if there would be an opportunity for the hospital to pick up a, a service that he's provided the community for years. Ensuring access to quality care is extremely important, not only for our citizens, but for us as an organization, not only to Scottsbluff and Gearing, but also to the whole region. The ambulance service, like Randy mentioned, is top-notch, there are well-qualified individuals providing care. There's opportunities for us as we work closely with that ambulance service to allow some of the EMTs and some of the professionals to integrate and do continued training in the hospital when they're not out on the road. It's also important to know that there's two types of ambulance services. One is EMS and when you have critical care, that needs to be delivered right away, but there's over-the-road transport too. A lot of people probably aren't aware how important that over-the-road transport is to an organization like Regional West, but the reality is, if you don't have a way for referring patients to get to the hospital, then they're referred someplace else. When Randy approached us, we methodically went through the process of, of a transition and Randy's agreed to help us through this first period of time. Marissa Nicole, one of our leaders, and sending back here, has experience in emergency services and she's been working with Randy since January. The, the high-level quality ambulance service that you have here in Scottsbluff is something other communities would be really envious of, so our intent is to continue with that service. I want to thank you for your time and if you have any questions of me, I, I respond.
Thank you for coming, Mel.
Yeah.
One of the questions that I have, in this particular agreement that we have, one of the benefits is that we aren't charged for any transportation from the jail, I shouldn't say the jail, the detention center, the detention center to the hospital. And we were trying to figure out what that benefit is. Is, is the per, is the, the rate going to increase? The hospital rate going to increase from what it is now to something higher or lower or?
No, we don't have any intent at this time to really change any of the charges. And we'll continue to work with our third-party payers like the Blue Cross, Blue Shield of the world that do more of the private payments for patients. And those might change, given the nature of your negotiations with your contracts with those individuals. But as a service to the community, no, we wouldn't, we would maintain currently what is existing.
Just whatever the charge was.
Yeah.
We, we were looking at that to see how many, how many of our, our guests have been picked up and, you know, all of that sort of thing, so...
Randy, you'd spoke on a kickback or a potential kickback. And this, item three, part one, that, that way it reads, it almost looks like a kickback because it says here that, plus, I'll put my glasses on, I'll be able to read it. Contract agrees to provide service between, to the agreement, to inmates at Scottsbluff County Jail and Juvenile Detention Section at no additional cost to Scottsbluff County. So, it looks like it would be a lot nicer if it was worded differently than that to where it would say it was included in this contract rather than say, you know, that those charges were already included in this contract, rather than say that we're doing it at no charge. Because of no charge, you assume no, no liabilities or responsibilities when, when you say no charge.
We can, we can sure look at that.
I'd like to look, it don't, I don't know, it has to be done tonight or anything like that.
Sure.
Before it changes, that, that would be one thing that does stand out as a kickback.
Sure, and, and we can address that as, if it's necessary. To answer your question on how many times, every... how many times average we respond to the detention center, correction center? One makes terminology right there. We average twenty a year. So, at twenty a year, you're talking about cost with ambulance service for advanced life support, that's about fifty thousand dollars. The subsidy that you pay for the contract currently is forty-three-five. Of that forty-three-five, a little over thirteen thousand of it is split between Scotts Bluff and Gearing. Two-thirds is picked up by the county, so that's about thirty thousand. So, just in that alone.
It's almost, almost a break even then. I think that's the number that we were talking about here a while back. Yeah. And that's why I was asking if that, if that number was going to increase, or whether we're going to get a discount, I guess. Yeah.
I would also add that, as far as the kickback issue, too, hospitals are expected to provide, we're a non-for-profit hospital, and we're expected to provide some community services and demonstrate that to maintain our non-for-profit status. So, it's not unusual for ambulance services across the state to receive some compensation from counties, either for treatment of prisoners or services like ambulances and reducing that cost. And there, I don't know of anything illegal regarding that. So, it's a common practice.
I'll ask the rest of the board, do we, are you in agreement with that? Okay. Paul, are you, are you all right with changing that wording in that? Okay. Paul Hoffmeister sitting back here, for those that don't know, he's the hospital's attorney. We don't have any representation for us here tonight, so, except for, except for.
But we could be sure that Dave, Uvanks, and Paul
Yeah.
communicated, made sure that both sides are happy
Right.
and addressed that issue.
No, thank you.
This is something that was just kind of every year, or every three years, we just signed our name to it and moved it on, and
Sure.
It's kind of a big deal. We want to make sure it's done right. That's all.
Thank you.
So, a couple of thoughts and questions. So, obviously, the, one of the things that we want to be sure of, and that's that there is qualified and quality ambulance response to calls within the county, and when I say county, including the cities involved as well. And that's what we've pretty much always got. And now, in the original part of this, I'm not sure that you went to all of those outlined communities like you do today. But, you know, we've grown, I think, fond of the service. We've been happy and satisfied with what Randy's been doing. Exactly, you know, things have changed a little over the years. There's probably a good chance that these services would be provided by Valley at this point now, anyway. But it does give us, certainly just the jail part alone, makes it a good deal for us, this contract. It puts in place a, an agreement that says this is going to be available. I know the hospital has a, has a real interest in these services being available. People being transported to the hospital is a good thing for them, too. And then, part of this, does part of this then end up getting paid by Scotts Bluff and Gearing? Right, that's what I thought. The cities of Scotts Bluff and Gearing reimburse us, so.
Total money going out of, that we budget for is like forty-three thousand, but we do receive like ten thousand five hundred from Scotts Bluff and just under four thousand from Gearing.
Okay.
And they're in agreement to continue this, I assume?
You actually have that through a resolution, so that resolution doesn't specify who's providing the services in terms of contract.
Okay. They continue that payment with us. Okay. One of the things that, that we like, and we brought this up more than once, and you brought it up briefly tonight, is you basically have the emergency room pulling in your driveway, and that's going to continue. That's not going to change. Who will be managing this? Who will be managing that portion of it, Randy? Because we know that you're gonna go off and go fishing, or go, whatever it is that you plan on doing.
The young lady right behind me, to my right.
Okay.
Yeah, Marissa Nicole.
Okay.
Has a background in emergency and EMS, so, and call center.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she's been working with Randy, how many months now, Nicole? First, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, and we're going to do a transition period, too, where she's in charge, but Randy's available for.
Very good, very good. Not that we don't trust you. We just, we just, we just have known him for so long, you know, it's just.
We've grown fond of his service, and I can remember, yeah, and dedication to the community. I can remember my mother, twenty years ago, saying, if I have to go to the hospital, I want that Randy Mindinger to come and pick me up.
I want that Randy kid to come get me, yeah.
And so, yeah, it's meant a lot to us, and we just will trust that that level of service and dedication to the community continues with, from the hospital service. And, you know, I know these people up here, we're not bashful to say something if, if we think something is different, and so we'll do that.
We'll be the first ones to hear about it.
We're gonna try and expect that it doesn't happen.
Yeah. I think, too, providing ambulance services across the state is becoming more and more of a challenge. I'll be really honest with you.
Sure.
And part of that is, we always, I hate to use the excuse COVID, but EMS staff are becoming more and more scarce. It's harder for some of the communities to provide volunteer ambulance services anymore, because they have to cut, step out of their business. So, usually hospitals stay out of ground and emergency ambulance services. But when Randy announced this, it's real important that we maintain educated staff for the people of Scotts Bluff and Gearing and the region. And to do that is, is a challenge for any hospital, as far as financially. But we've worked through this. We think we're going to be fine. And to, quite frankly, get a private service to come and provide that service, they just aren't out there and willing to make that investment on, kind of to the western part of the state. So, I'm really excited that we've come to a good transition, and that we can continue to provide service and the bar that Randy has set, so.
But, and, you know, Randy has taken this service from the old panel trucks that he bought fifty, forty-five years ago, and turned it into what he has now.
We might have a couple of those, don't we, Randy?
Really?
Yeah.
The old eight oh one, you know, whatever it was called.
Yeah.
But, you know, with the training and everything that he's provided, all of these volunteer departments, and, and that's going to continue. That's not going anywhere.
No.
And everybody can just build on what Valley Ambulance has done.
Yep, you're right, Ken. Yep.
Yeah, I do, I do want to answer your question mark, because you're right, when we were started in seventy-four, seventy-nine, our vision was to be able to connect with all the volunteer squads and be able to outreach and provide that. That came into all of the departments signed on in nineteen eighty-four. We actually set the model for the entire state of Nebraska with that. In doing that, I know how important it is to me.
Quit it. You're gonna, you're gonna have me up here, too, pretty quick, buddy.
If it's important to me, it's important to you, it's important to our community. This is my county. And so, we made sure, when Mel and I were going through the agreement, that those tiering agreements with those other departments, that is part of the agreement. That is part, this reassignment is part of the agreement, because without that, you start sliding stuff under the table, and then all of a sudden, oh, well, you did this, but I wasn't involved. That's not what this is about. We're coming to you very open. But those are part of the agreement, so that nothing happens without your approval. Nothing happens unless the volunteer squads are taking care of it. And we were very, I was very adamant that has to be part of it, and so has the hospital.
Well, I want to trust it's gonna all be at a level of service that we're happy with, and the same or similar service as what we're getting. And I know that there's a provision in the contract about if one of us feel that the other one's not doing what they agreed to do, that there's a ninety-day out clause. I don't anticipate that being something we're going to need to deal with, but it is in there in case, at some point in time, there was an issue. And I don't see that being a problem at this point. We're, I think, Mel, you know our expectations, and if our level of service is the same as what it has been, we're gonna, I think our constituents throughout the county is going to be happy with that.
Yeah, and please feel free to give feedback, comments, and from anybody that has an experience that isn't exceptional, please let us know.
We just need to change a little language in this, you know, before we sign it, and...
Well, we're asking you, so officially, we're asking you to reassign the agreement, and then I think you come back and say we need to tweak these, because you want the agreement to move forward.
Right.
So, officially, I'm asking you to reassign.
With, with the changes that we, that we talked about.
Well, I'd like to at least have them observed by counsel and have them, it does look quite right to me.
How about we have a motion that says that contingent upon?
Contingent upon the changes that were discussed tonight.
All getting together, making sure that language
Yeah.
is compatible.
You're okay with all that, Paul? Yes.
When does this begin?
We'll send a notice to you. We're looking for an October second.
October.
So, we have, we have, we have a little time to, have a little time to work it back before, we got a couple, three meetings.
September.
We'd sign contracts at the next meeting, possibly.
Yes, possibly, yeah. We get all that done.
Are we just going to use this contract, or what are we doing?
Yeah, we're just reassigning that.
Tweak, tweak this one to the changes that we talked about.
Okay.
Change some wording, and then sign it. Yes, Charlie.
Is the current EMR that Valley uses, is it ZERKER?
No.
Okay.
We actually use image strand. It is, is actually what is required by the state of Nebraska. Ever in looking at the possibilities of Epic or some of the other ones that are out there, they'll integrate image strand into it. The current one that the hospital has will not.
And we're looking at that implementation of Epic for October of twenty twenty-four, around that period. It takes almost a year to prepare for that, as you probably know. And then, what's really nice about the Epic, too, I can pull up on my phone everything that's going on with me, and I can actually see results from different tests prior to the physician even seeing them. To be honest with you, it's a, it's a good mechanism to work with.
Wow.
So, it's built into your own phone? You have everything in your own phone? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, on my personal phone right now, I can pull up my medical record in North Platte and show you everything wrong with me, including my psych eval.
Careful, Mel.
My, my, the only reason for my question was just to make sure we didn't have an added cost to interface with Epic, but it sounds like.
No, it just has.
Yeah, if that interface occurs, then there's a cost, it'll be on our part. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for taking.
Mel, I wanted to thank you as well. I, I came in and I spoke with you.
Yes.
And you were just getting your feet wet at that point.
Yeah.
But I've talked to several people at the hospital, and it sounds like you're doing a really outstanding job putting that back together.
The team has been.
Put Ducky Ducky back together.
Been really good. There's a lot of effort being made on improving quality. We've had some great physician recruitment. We have an orthopedic group that's dedicated to Scotts Bluff and not relying on from out of town. The quality scores are going up. The rumor is that we're closing. We're not, we're not broke, but we have a lot of work to do. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun. And it really is a team effort for all the staff and the leadership that have really put forth the effort. But ensuring access to quality care in this region is so important, so.
I'd want to thank you for taking that job, Mel.
No, thank you.
No kidding.
Yeah.
I, I have one more thing. It's kind of off-topic, but kind of on-topic, and since we've got some people in the room that, that might be able to help us. This board up here would like a greater or more in-depth explanation as to our risk or our exposure and our responsibilities to Scotts Bluff County Hospital Authorities one and two. And I know Tom, was it Tom?
Tom Holyo. I have a call right here from him, just, just as we speak.
You know, he's been here a few times to ask us to appoint folks to that hospital authority. But I think the consensus up here is, is that we would like to know more. We would like to learn more about exactly what our exposure is. And, and I think as we learn more, we'll have more questions.
We'll arrange some time for somebody like Paul, or somebody from a bonding company to sit down with you guys and.
That would, the sooner the better.
Okay.
I'm, I'm getting a ton of phone calls, ever since the newspaper article.
Yeah.
A lot of questions that I can't answer.
Yeah, no problem.
That would be, that would be great. That would be great. Appreciate it.
Who should we get back in touch with?
You call me. That'd be great.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
So, I believe the motion would be that we would move forward to work on the reassignment
Move forward on negotiation, yes.
But with a contingency that the attorneys, the county attorney and your attorney get together to finalize the exact language that needs to be modified.
To bring back to the board either next meeting or meeting after, prior, prior to that October deadline that we want to get done with. Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five guesses.
And I, and I can't speak about the old beat-up vans that Randy used to have, because I sold them to him. I understand that, and they were beat up. Thank you. Next item to discuss and consider approval of inter-local agreement with the city gearing regarding pictometry. Ashley, you're up. How are you tonight?
I'm just peachy.
That's my line, peachy.
I'm nursing a cold at the moment, so. This agreement is, we've been doing this since, I think, we got pictometry, but we never had anything in writing. So, it's basically just us sharing city imagery with the city of gearing, and then they reverse us for their portion. And I had figured their portion alongside with our, with pictometry, and it goes by the amount of pictures that cover their city limits. So, in this agreement, it does say that if they annex, then obviously their price will go up next flight. Yeah. So, there's, that's pretty much. Do you have any questions?
What are we talking, dollar-wise, Ashley?
Um, it is, the city of gearing is for one year, so we break it out over three years. So, it'd be one thousand one hundred and sixteen and sixty-six cents.
Per year.
Per year, for three years.
Thirty-four seventy?
Thirty-four seventy. What are you talking about?
Thirty-four seventy for three years.
Yeah.
What's the total agreement?
The, for pictometry, our total is, second page. So, total is one, one hundred and seven thousand five ten, and we pay, we break it out over three years for ourselves, which is, it's like thirty-five thousand eight, thirty-six, sixty-six.
So, gearing loans paying almost ten percent of us?
Yeah, because it's broke out by the amount of, they call it sectors, the amount of sectors that cover their city. So, they have. So they have, they have ten sectors that cover the city limits of gearing. So that's, that's where the price comes out.
How'd you figure ten percent? Okay, and what was Scotts Bluff's portion?
Um, that's another agreement. Do you want me to?
Oh, we're not there yet, sorry.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll do city gearing first then.
Yeah. I mean, I can talk about them both, but it's, it's up to you guys.
Um, yeah, well, let's, let's do that. Let's, just include city of Scotts Bluff and then we'll vote on, vote on them separately then.
Okay, so.
So I have one question before you go further. And I guess, so the question is simply, when I've went into MIPS recently, the pictometry doesn't seem to come up. Is that, are we having an issue with that?
Um, there might be an issue with MIPS, but I don't, I don't have any contact with them. I mean, we could definitely get ahold of MIPS. I mean, some, I don't know. I'm not sure how they, they connect. I mean, maybe there's a link broken on one of the parcels. I'm not sure.
And when I say MIPS, I'm talking about assessor online.
I looked at one with Ken today and it worked, so maybe there's certain ones.
Maybe there's something wrong with my server or something blocking it or something.
Maybe. And if you want, you can let me know and I can look into it.
I'll check it again tomorrow. Alright, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, so the city of Scotts Bluff, their payment amount is the same, same agreement. I had Phil Kelly help me with it. They have eleven sectors versus ten, so their price is one thousand one hundred and fifty-six sixty-six.
And you said per year?
Per year for three years, cuz we fly every three years.
What, what do you consider a sector? I guess I.
That's pictometry speak.
Yeah, that's, I, it's a, that's a pictometry question.
Pictometry talk? Gotcha, okay.
I, I would have, I, I see squares. It is. They are, they're broken out into little squares.
That's what I was looking at today was those little squares, right? Kind of, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and then they get like embedded together, like stitched, I think is actually the word that they use. They stitch them together and make it countywide.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, okay, yeah, so that was that price then. It does, in this agreement, it does say that, you know, if they annex, then their price obviously goes up.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? We can vote on these separately, one for gearing, one for Scotts Bluff. What's the board's pleasure?
So we still have the large portion of the whole bill. They just have a tiny piece.
Yes, because they're only being charged for what covers their city.
So you have the same coverage as they do on this? So are we being double charged for that?
No, no, cuz we pay for the whole thing and then they reimburse us their part.
Yeah, they're separate. They're separate on the agenda.
So you can just let them in to take out the section they want to?
I give them what they, yeah. I, I physically give it to them.
Okay, so I need a motion for approval of the interlocal agreement with the city of Scotts Bluff regarding pictometry.
Can we do gearing first?
Oh, gearing, I'm sorry, yes.
I move that we approve the interlock agreement with the city of gearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five guesses?
Thank you. Now I need a motion for interlocal agreement with the city of Scotts Bluff.
I would move that we approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Scotts Bluff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five guesses?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Okay, next item on the agenda is discuss and consider the payment to Department of Revenue. Those of you that read your memo, and Lisa, I'll refer to you on some of this. We've got a, an email with a bill for, I don't have that in front of me.
I have it here.
It should be in your packet.
Oh, there it is, right there. Seventy-four, seventy-four forty-seven thirty-six. Six twenty-eight twenty-three for two ninety-nine, seven twelve twenty-three for three thousand twenty-seven twenty-three, and seven twenty-six for four thousand one twenty thirty-nine. And we have, who on the, who's on the phone? Ruth and Sarah?
Sarah Scott and Ruth Soren.
Okay, are on the phone.
Are you, are you there ladies?
Hello?
We are here.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for waiting. First of all, it was our understanding, and maybe we're wrong anyway, when all of this first started, that the only thing that we were going to get billed for is if, is for the Saturday, if Mark was going to have to come in, we're gonna get, if he had to work overtime. Are, are we wrong with that, Ruth, or is that a misunderstanding or what?
Yeah, hi, this is Ruth Sorenson. Thank you for allowing us to attend my phone. I had originally indicated that there would be no charge.
Okay.
But then we dedicated, as the email indicates, over, what, nine employees? I'm not charging for the other nine employees. There's a lot of travel time, a lot of overtime, and we did not include travel expenses, you know, meals, et cetera. This is unusual because there was, there was so much overtime. It was a shocking number as you see on the invoice, and that's just Mark's time. And there are so many other expenses that I am absorbing that I can't absorb all of it at this time. And I'm concerned going forward since, as you indicated, it was a tough week and the person in the office that could do a lot of the work is no longer there. So I'm not sure what's going to happen going forward. But at this point, I am just asking for reimbursement for Mark's time. He has dedicated and continues to try to dedicate a lot of time to the office. And you know that we can talk about how we go forward with this, but I really need to have my state employee work on his other eight or nine counties as well.
Okay. Ruth, is he still available to us for, for work or things that we need to have done?
I don't know what you're asking. I don't know what work.
What I'm asking is, is, is Mark still available to us for, for work that still needs to be done in that office?
Well, what I can tell you is, I know that, I don't know Jean's in the room, but she's been emailing Mark. I've asked any valuation questions you sent to me and Sarah Scott, and we would take care of those. I don't want Mark to be strictly dedicated to that office. I'm hoping the board has a plan going forward since the one person in the office could see them and miss by one point and could retake it and have a certificate. I also know that Jean Bauer has a certificate, so she could run that office. And we could help train her.
Well, she actually can't cuz she's already an elected official. She holds, she holds.
We have a couple other counties that run both the registered fees and county assessor office. It has to go on the ballot.
Yeah, it has to, that, that has to be voted on by the, by the, by the citizens.
Yeah, yeah. We have Paul County, we have Sarpy County, we have Lancaster County, Douglas County, oh, not Sarpy, Paul, Douglas, Lancaster.
Right, right, okay.
They are dual officers.
Right.
And it can spend.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not.
If you employ her as a deputy right now until it gets on the ballot, that would work and we could help. Because I know she's in the office looking for her things. I cannot have Mark come in. There is no unfinished business. Let's put it that way.
What was that last statement?
Say that again. There is no what?
Unfinished business. Mark was contacted by the power that she's concerned there are unfinished business because she's found notes on Mark's desk. But those are just notes that Mark made for himself and that is complete. If, if there's any concern about anything that's found in the office, I would ask that, that document be scanned and sent to me and Sarah Scott. But I also have to tell you that we have statutory requirements coming up. We need to help Kelly get the permit, permit of exemption list done by the end of the month. And I am really hoping that the board has a plan now that that office is down to one person.
Okay, well, Jean is in the, Jean is in the room right now. Jean, do you have any response to what, what you just said? You wanna come up? Can you hear her there?
Um, yeah, the only, we have Dave and he's currently trying to finish up the personal property. And there's a stack of papers that we found that are personal property and homesteads. So we're just trying to go through those and make sure those are all complete and entered. And the only question I had for Mark is that we're trying to get some people brought into the office, but we have two desks that are covered with papers and we don't know if those are supposed to be just filed away or, I mean, I don't wanna touch anything and, you know, I don't know what's, what's done or not, but there's, they're absolutely covered with lots of papers, protests and all things. And I'm, I'm assuming they're done and can be filed away.
Jean, has, has Mark been back in the office?
I think the last day he was there was August twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth was the last day, okay.
Right, because I sent you the email that effective August thirty-first, I sent it on Monday before the board made, I don't know the board, the chairperson, Jean and Lisa made the decision to remove one employee that had the knowledge. And then another one has left. So we now don't know what's on their desk, but protests are done.
Well, then I guess we can file that stuff that.
And all the values are entered into the system.
Okay.
And I, I don't know why the desks are being reviewed or looked through. I'm not, I'm not really sure. And of course, if somebody would contact me, I've not received any responses. I've not received emails from any concerned county officials. Any response would be helpful.
Can I mention it or you wanna say something?
I, Ruth, I think Jean was asking you some questions. What is it?
Well, I asked him to mark.
Today, oh, she asked him, Mark, just some basic questions to what you responded with that you wouldn't, all, everything had to go to you or Sarah. You wouldn't respond to her question.
Um, well, no, June twenty-ninth, I sent an email to Jean announcing that any and all valuation questions you sent to me and Sarah.
Okay, so she asked a question and you.
Today, I did not comply with that.
How'd she not comply? She asked you a question.
Well, I asked, I asked.
And Jean knows that.
I asked Mark. I asked Mark because I wasn't, I don't really know, I guess, what anybody is doing. And I wasn't sure if, I haven't heard from anybody.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is, is Mark our representative for our, for our area?
No, he has got nine other counties.
Oh, I understand, I understand that, but is he our representative?
He is a field liaison only.
He, he is a field rep?
He does not work in every county like he has for the last two months.
Okay, but is he our representative for Scotts Bluff County?
He is your current field liaison.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for us to contact him with these questions that, that Jean is having?
I asked on June twenty-ninth that the emails regarding inquiries, emails about valuation questions you sent to Sarah and I. And I would continue to ask that because if Mark gets behind on his other eight counties, I would have to create some type of disciplinary action because he is, he cannot focus only on one county. And I'm hoping you have a plan for a deputy county assessor. I sent an email on August fifteenth, never heard a response. We can hold an emergency exam. Anybody can take that exam. Nobody responded.
Now let's be sure that, you know, from the very beginning, Mark loose, we appointed him as the interim county assessor and you were, I believe, aware and part of that and then.
Uh, no.
Okay.
I would say no. You cannot appoint a state employee as a county interim assessor.
You did.
We did.
We did that and you didn't say anything about it.
Nobody said anything.
I, I understand you did that.
Okay.
I understand. I got the minutes. I got the notification after you made that action.
Okay.
Were you?
It was done after we left the meeting.
Were you okay with it then?
I was not. I just allowed Mark to help the values. You know, I had nine other employees, including myself, come in to help. But you cannot, you cannot appoint a state employee. He either has to be employed by the state or employed by the county.
Would, would that have been something that we, would that have been something that we should have been maybe made aware of at that time?
Um, I was talking to John Cannon and I was hoping, I don't oversee the county board, sorry.
Would that have been something that we should have been made aware of, Ruth, at the time that we did that?
Perhaps by NACO, perhaps by another entity, because I cannot tell you what you can or cannot do. But I can tell you that as a state employee, he can't hold two jobs. That's a conflict. And I emphasize to you all, well, maybe not you all, maybe Commissioner Knapper called me, it's a conflict. It's a conflict to have Mark involved with county business as state employee. However, in this situation, it was an emergency, so I allowed him to come in and help with values.
So.
And we can help with values, we can help with protests, we can help train, which we were doing.
Okay.
We were training the employees in that office, but now they're gone.
So Ruth, at the time that we did that, you were aware of it, is that correct?
Was I aware of it?
Yes, were you, were you?
Not until, not until I read it.
And.
Nobody contacted me.
I guess.
Did you tell me who contacted me? It was done without asking me about it. I knew you were gonna ask. I said Mark would be available, absolutely. Available does not mean being appointed.
Was Mark aware that he was not able to do that?
Um, yes. But how can he tell the board not to? He didn't know about that until after the fact. None of us did.
I, I believe part of this discussion, and I, I thought that you, and I'm not so sure Sarah, wasn't part of a discussion in executive session. And part of this stuff that I would like to be talking about was discussed in the executive session and I don't feel comfortable talking about it all.
I agree, Commissioner Harris.
Okay.
I agree, but I can tell you that we were not part of any discussion in executive session at that time.
Well, I believe that we had an executive session and on, on the, at least the one occasion that, that I'm quite certain that you and or Sarah were part of. were part of that on the speakerphone. And if, um, and I guess one other thing I want to be real clear on, and that's that, um, when we made the appointment of, we made it as Mark Luce being the interim assessor. And at the same time, um, we had Jean Bauer, we appointed her as the interim deputy assessor. And, um, we did it all at the same time.
Uh, yeah, and, and I read about that in the news. Um, we were aware that you were requesting Mark's help and we offered it.
Right.
We were not aware that you all were going to vote to name him interim. I was not in that session. I was in a separate executive session that we won't discuss here.
Right.
But you all made that decision without my knowledge. And we were offering Mark's help.
Right.
Regardless of the title, it's part of Mark's duties. And all of my field liaisons and me and my team help any and all counties. But it's not a long-term situation. And it's been two months. And so I offer to send a contract of agreement to you all if you want to continue to have me and my team help. And we're here to help. But at some point, there needs to be some type of compensation or agreement.
Okay, uh, the, so Ruth, what you're saying is that the, the number that I'm looking at here, the seventy four hundred dollars and change, uh, is strictly for Mark Luce's overtime, is that, would that be a correct statement?
Uh, yes. It's the time, it's the time he's spent and there's a lot of overtime.
Okay, so that.
You know, you worked weekends, you know, you had, we worked, I was there until ten, eleven, twelve at night.
Sure, I know, I understand that.
I, you know, my hours are not there, Sarah's are not there, Deborah's are not there.
Okay.
But there was so many hours spent. And it's unfortunate that you had so many protests. And the timing of the medical emergency, it, it, it all just compiled. And, um, we're happy to continue to help. Just we need some type of agreement if the board doesn't have another plan. I've done that, the, the thing in, in another county, by the way.
We certainly have a executive session scheduled for this evening.
Okay.
And part of the things that, um, need to be discussed, needs to be done in that executive session.
Absolutely, I agree.
And, um, then I think once that is done, then we can kind of let you know where I think we're headed somewhat in this, in this office, so to speak.
I am, I am on the phone. I sent that invoice, if you want to negotiate that, I'm willing to negotiate. I, I always emphasize we are here to help.
Okay.
We are here to help.
Let me, uh.
However, um, I need to know a plan going forward because nobody is communicating with me. No Scotts Bluff county assessor, county official is communicating with us.
Ruth, let me, let me ask you, what, one more, is, is Mark going to be available to assist us if we have any questions or concerns, uh, as far as the office is concerned?
As needed, as needed.
As needed.
It's valuation issues. Uh, we've already told Kelly that we'll help her with the postcard information coming up. You have some statutory requirements.
Are we going to be, are we going to be charged for that? Or is that, is that just a, a service you're going to provide?
At this point, I can tell you we will provide that to Kelly. Um, absolutely. Um, Kelly and Tina have been very helpful in, in going through everything. Um, having others demand certain hours is not okay. Um, demands classes, passing classes. And that person knows who that is. Um, that really created a lot of angst. Um, so we will help Kelly get these postcards done, we'll help through the end of September, how's that?
Okay, I'm, Ruth.
Then we need to talk about some type of contract of agreement if the board doesn't have a plan going forward.
Ruth, this is Kelly. I'm looking for permissives for the publication.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I can't hear you.
Permiss.
The permissive.
Right.
Publication, yeah, that's required as well. We have the permissive and then we need the information for the postcards.
Okay, uh, I don't, I don't know that we're going, going to get anything solved right now, Ruth. We, uh, I, I, and I said it at the beginning of the meeting, I, we do appreciate all, everything that the state did for us. Uh, the team that was out here was very, very helpful, everybody, including yourself. Uh, we do appreciate everything that Mark did for us. Uh, I don't know that we could have gotten through it without everybody's help. Uh, it was, and I know there were some long, long hours and we do appreciate that. Uh, it was a, it was a tough week, it was a tough week for everybody. One of the, one of the toughest protests I've ever been through in, in twenty plus years here, so, uh, we do appreciate that.
Right.
And we will, uh, we will discuss this, we do have an executive session later. And, uh, those are, this is one of the things that we will be discussing and how we're going to move forward with not only this, but some other, some other items that we're going to talk about. And, uh, we can, we, we get back.
Okay, will, will somebody contact me with?
Yes.
To, here to proceed or request the date?
Yes, we will. Uh, either, it'll either be myself or Jean or, or Lisa will, uh, will be in contact with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because we really worked hard to train the employees that were in the office and it's for not, but, okay, we'll have to talk over.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ruth, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So can we just, uh?
Okay, the blue lights are off, that means it's over? Okay.
We have like a motion to table it or something?
Yeah.
How about, can you consider the payment?
Yeah.
That, that's the question.
Are we going to, uh, talk about that executive session?
I think, I, I would, I would entertain a motion that we table the.
Until following the executive session?
Executive session, possibly.
A motion that we table the.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just a second.
We're tabling this with the thought that we'll talk about it after the executive session.
Yes.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Record your votes, please.
I, I'm not ready, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Let me know.
And it's open, go.
Okay, record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close. Next item, discuss, consider. Discuss, consider ratification, chairman's signature on the Amendment Motorola Solutions Lease Purchase Agreement. Lisa?
Okay, I did, um, Kelly should have included a copy of that, I believe, with your packet. And I'm hoping I, uh, opened up the wrong thing. And we just made this very large, one-time payment. The four million dollars went out and was cashed last week. So they had to redo the payment schedule. We are basically the, what do you call it, pass-through? Um, entity, these are not, th- these are the balances due from Village Immoral, City of Mitchell and Village of Lyman. And they are expected to give us payments um, annually by prior to July one, so we can make this payment.
And it is in the packet that I sent you.
Okay.
If it's easier for you to find, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I found it, there's the amendment to the equipment lease agreement. Ted can sign it because you can see where there's the four million, four hundred thousand, five hundred fifty-nine, seventeen cent one-time payment that we can make. And I think they mostly allowed us to make this one-time large payment because it's our, a good portion was ARPA funds for this project. So that was two point nine million dollars came out of the ARPA funds.
Okay, I would certainly entertain a motion for ratification of the signature. I've got thirty-seven bucks in my checking account right now. I'm going to have to go to Mr. Bush for some help if I don't.
We're glad you're around.
Looks like you already signed it.
It's ratification of the signature.
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to think about that.
This agreement is what we anticipated doing from the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, we set, we did a lease to, a lease agreement in order to give us the two years, zero percent interest back in June, June of twenty.
Over a life of seven years, wasn't it?
Over a seven or ten.
Seven, but the first two were.
Yeah. Okay, I'm trying to think of my year, twenty twenty-one. And now we're at twenty twenty-three, we had to make our first payment, first payment was due seven hundred eight thousand, nine thirty-four. And I thought we were going to be able to just make big payments on this and pay it down. And that's when they came and said, no, you can't. You either pay it off or, um, you continue making the lease payments. And we've set up payment plans with every entity. But then most of them, but then I've made the arrangements to go ahead and make this one lump, lump, one lump sum payment, which just got made. So that we weren't tied to just making the lease payments for the next seven years.
So several of the entities paid you in full?
City of Scotts Bluff, City of Gearing, um, all of the rural fire departments have now paid. And like I said, all we have left is Village of, Village Immoral, Village of Lyman and City of Mitchell. And, uh, okay, and with a caveat, there is a separate lease agreement for Minotair Melbida Fire. Because they, they.
Is Tyler here?
No, he's not. Um, there was some situations where all change orders had to be in by a certain date. And they missed those dates. They got pulled out and put on their own lease agreement for like a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
They went past the due date on the.
Um, change orders and finalizing and, yeah, so they ended up, they come through and said, here's what we want, it's like you were supposed to let us know this like ten months ago. And so they got put on their own agreement.
So these lease payments that I'm seeing here of seven hundred and.
From now on, we have to pay eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So the seven hundred and eight is what it looked like before. I don't know, I think I might have sent you the, yeah, this is how it looked like first. This is what they came to us.
And now it's eighty.
Eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
This is a pass, this money comes from those entities, we don't pick up any of that, we just shuffle it through.
Yep. We're down to three, we got them all.
Why would Motorola just took aside my policy?
Uh, some of the, that was kind of how we did it, to get everybody the statewide radio pricing. They got, they, that was how we sold it on us getting the whole incentive of like a million dollars off this whole project. We took all of that, but they kept with us to get the better rates on their radios.
Supper ready? It was good to see you, Bob.
Good to see you, Bob, thanks for coming.
Drive careful, buddy.
So that eighty-five thousand is certainly.
Don't be a stranger.
With a total of what appears to be five point seven nine five million. That's what we expected from the, we made the big payment, which changed it, but the bottom line number is what we expected or less.
Well, there's interest to them.
Right.
We, we are going to have to, I think, through the twenty-nine ten fund, pay the twenty-five thousand dollars in interest.
Right.
Because that's two months of interest since July one.
But we expected to make payments all along.
We were hoping to pay big bulk payments, but I was told you either pay it one time
Uh-huh.
and pay it all, of which we couldn't then support everybody else's radio purchases because that's just too much money. Or we were going to have to pay, uh, seven hundred and eight thousand a year, of which we are making pretty darn good interest on this right now.
That ARPA, and we're still planning on using some of the ARPA money to make these payments, would that be true?
ARPA's done.
Okay.
We made two million, nine hundred thousand from the ARPA fund. And that is all that's paid out of ARPA.
The other entities kicked in the balance, the other two, you know, like another two.
Yeah, another two million between City of Scotts Bluff, City of Gearing, Scotts Bluff Rural had to pay like almost a hundred thousand. Yeah, each Gearing and Scotts Bluff, six, seven hundred thousand was what they had due and they, they coughed it up.
They paid it early.
What's that?
They paid it off early.
Yeah, so we could make the big, yeah.
All right. So this needed to be signed and you're asking for.
Ratification.
Ratification in.
Yeah. I wish I would have brought it to you last meeting, I didn't get here. And that's on me. But we had to do this in order to, for them to allow this to go through, for me to make the one-time big payment. I wish we could have one more of one by big time, then maybe all those other entities could pay, but maybe they couldn't. Because I believe Village Immoral is helping the rural fire department there too. Or they're, they're trying to help support them with their payments.
Okay, so we're.
Do you need a motion on that, Mark?
We need a motion to ratify Ken's signature.
I'll make a motion to ratify the board chairman's signature on an equipment rental or lease purchase agreement with Motorola.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Thank you.
So are you ready, Ms. Kelly, for us to vote? Hell.
I am.
Okay.
And I'm just going to have him abstain.
That's the best.
Yeah, right.
Mike and Charlie.
Make sure you vote it.
Okay, to close?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have four yeses.
Okay, so the motion's approved.
You abstained.
Four, four yes votes and one abstention.
You abstained on that.
All right, we'll go on to the next item. Discuss and consider approval of personnel policy about injury leave and workers' comp, Lisa.
Yeah, um, we presented, we, we, personnel board met at the end of July. And we had like five different policies that we approved to bring to you, of which you've already looked at two of them. And I need to give the, the last two to you. Two or three?
Two.
Two. Thank you.
Uh, seventy-six, zero, three point three zero is the first one.
Right.
Seventy-six, zero, three point, the injury leave one.
That's the one we're looking at right now.
Right, right. Hold on, I gotta get, I can't read that far.
One at a time, apparently.
Yeah.
I think we were just, um, clarifying this one.
Yeah, we just cleaned it up.
Cleaned it up, yeah, let me, let me come up. Justifications, okay, so we're looking down at paragraph two. Employees shall report all such incidents and work-related injuries to their supervisor immediately upon notice of injury, but no later than twenty-four hours after injury in order to obtain proper medical treatment and to complete the required forms. Eligibility for workers' compensation benefits is determined on the basis of an accurate report of the incident as well as the time, as well as the timeframe in which it is reported. The county's workers' compensation claims are managed by NERMA. The county NERMA contact person must have the incident information within twenty-four hours from the elected appointed official in order to file a timely claim. And the NERMA contact person is myself and Kim. We serve in that role. Okay, so that's paragraph two. And number three, an employee who is determined to be disabled and unable to work due to a work-related injury will be compensated at an amount determined by the workers' compensation laws in effect at the, in, at the time of injury or disability. And we remove. And we removed, don't have this highlighted, a medical, medical certification statement may be required upon request from your elected appointed official, see page forty. We already addressed that in paragraph two. So we're taking that out as redundant. Medical expenses occurred in the treatment or injury of an, or illness determined to be work-related will be paid upon receipt of documented med, medical statements supporting the claim. So A, and if, any employee entitled to be paid workers' compensation for temporary disability. Shall use county-earned sick leave or vacation if accrued for the first seven working, first seven calendar days. Of such disability, including the day of injury, if disability began on that date. At the end of the seven calendar days, provisions of the Workers' Compensation Act shall apply. Okay, yes?
Is that, is that part of workers' comp law?
Yes.
That the worker must use their vacation time?
Yes, that is a statute. That's why we are updating to agree to statute. Um, I don't need to read B unless we want to go over it, okay, and then for example, then we're, okay, an employ, I am gonna read B. An employee who is receiving workers' compensation for an injury or occupa, occupational disease occurring out of and in the course of employment shall have the option of electing to use. Accumulated unused sick leave or vacation to supplement workers' compensation up to and not to exceed the regular rate of pay. Employees electing the option shall be charged sick or vacation leave in proportion to the amount of money paid by the county office by which he or she is employed. Workers, for example, workers' comp pays an amount equal to two thirds. Of the employee's regular pay, the employee elects to use sick leave or vacation leave to make up the balance of his or her salary. In this case, one third sick leave or vacation leave will be charged per day, and the sick leave or vacation leave will be earned at the normal rate. After, after all such leave or vacation leave has been used, the employee shall not be entitled to any compensation except that authorized by workers' comp. And shall be carried as sick leave without pay status. So, and I think you brought it up before, Charlie, didn't you, the two thirds comes from work comp, is that not taxed?
I, I believe that is not taxable.
Anyway, what we're getting at there is work comp pays two thirds and employees pay, we can, if they need a full paycheck, they can supplement with the one third out of their sick bank. If work comp is approved, uh, is approved.
Which is taxable.
Yeah.
And a lot of, two thirds, this is for example, and so it's whatever work comp pays. It, it may be two thirds, it may be something else, and so it's whatever they pay.
Right.
Right.
So that's the changes we are proposing, do you have any other questions, we're. It's, it's a hard pill to swallow, when someone gets hurt and has to go to quick care to get their finger fixed, and we say, you gotta use sick leave. And they're like, but I'm, I got hurt here. Well, the first seven days are not. Are not, are not, they're charged to you, not work comp. First off, we gotta make sure every claim is legitimate and proven, and that's a lot of why the rule is there, so.
But work comp helps us make that decision.
Yes, they do.
We don't have to make that decision really for them.
Yeah, and it is seven calendar days, so it's like Monday through Sunday, and then. Work comp, if you have a serious injury, work comp would start the following Monday, calendar days, not workdays. So you could end up using technically a week of your time, or however many days you missed in that seven days.
And most of that is all state statute things, and it, it's the same for the, I believe, the county, private employer, or whoever. Those rules are the same, and those.
We didn't make it up.
Right, those suppliers of work comp insurance are all under the same rules, same regulations.
Right. Right. That's, that's my first one.
So you, you're doing them separate, I'm assuming?
We, we found.
From here on out, we learned the hard way, yes, sir.
Right, do them separate.
Yeah, if you're okay with that, we can approve this one, and then we'll go to the next.
I think that first one has a lot to do with NERMA, doesn't it, from the way I read it, looks like, I think John Cannon ought to have a look at that before we make a decision on that. Just kinda inform, let, just let John Cannon read it over.
That's NACO.
John Cannon is NACO.
That's NACO.
Pam Horn is NERMA.
I'm on the wrong, I'm in the wrong group, I know.
Yeah.
Wrong letters.
I'm in the right church, just the wrong.
Wrong letters.
But you, but you took this language out of, out of NERMA's stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, we didn't, this is statute, this is how.
This is how NERMA does it.
Yeah, we changed our policy to make it correct.
Yeah, so this is NERMA's language.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval as presented?
I would move to approve after the six, seventy six oh three.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item is discuss and consider personnel policy update eighteen hundred, what is expected of you?
Okay, we wanted to update bullet number three under what is expected of you. Prior, it was called discretion, now we're gonna call it confidentiality. And what we're taking out is the work, records you work with involve people and their problems, your elected appointed official is counting on you to safeguard any confidential information in those records. Any breach of confidence is a violation of trust and cause for disciplinary action. That goes away and is replaced with, during the course of your employment with the county, you have, you may have access to and learn about confidential information. Such as employees or citizens' social security numbers, personal identifiable information, and financial information. Medical records, information related to criminal investigations, and other informations that may be designated as confidential by your department head. Employees must treat all such information as strictly confidential, and may be subject to disciplinary, up to and including termination of employment for accessing, using, publishing, disclosing. Or otherwise commuting, communicating such confidential information outside the scope of their authority and or legitimate job duties. So. Any concerns with the change in language?
I think that's a better change, I guess.
It's more descriptive, for sure.
Yeah.
Bet you had fun typing that that day.
Any questions on that one?
No, I think that's a better upgrade.
Okay.
So, I guess my, my only question is if, I mean, I'm, I like the change, I'm glad we're doing it, my only question is. Who, where does the final decision rest? If an employee breaks confidentiality. You know, is there, is there a, does it go to personnel board, does it go with just their supervisor, is it management?
Okay, supervisor to apply corrective action and or dismissal, and then if that person disagrees, then they come back, they, they file a grievance. And bring it to Personnel Board.
Right, yeah.
I guess my.
I guess if you, if you know of somebody that has done this out in the community, or said something they shouldn't, then you bring it to their, to the official in charge of that person, and it goes from there.
You know, these are, the, the only concern I have is that these are pretty serious allegations, and like, we're talking HIPAA. You know, it's federal law and that kind of stuff, and so it's a little more, um. But this is all along the same lines, and I just, I just wondered if there was more of a mandatory reporting type of process we wanted to follow. You know, if it, like, the hospital has the HIPAA compliance officer, so like, your supervisor doesn't even deal with it at the hospital.
It goes right to that.
It goes right to another person or entity that has to deal with it. I'm just wondering if that's a step too far in our case, or if that's something we should consider.
And employee calling a compliance officer kind of situation? It's worthy of a consideration, and who, would that be, someone on the outside, would it be a debut banks, you know?
I think the way, I think the way we're set up, I don't know who that other person would be, you have your department head or elected official. That would, that would write the initial.
Concern.
Concern that would go to the Personnel Department.
Or if that person is the concern, that person, then it would come to us or one of you, or to debut banks.
Or one of the. Or to debut banks or whatever, yeah. I, I think we're set up okay to handle it, right?
But you have a legitimate thought.
Yeah, yeah, right.
To maybe do, if you wanna do a confidential disclosure.
Yeah, so like if, if.
Well, then it would come.
If Ashley knew that. Somebody downstairs was out there, you know, spreading confidential information, Ashley could make an anonymous report. To a compliance officer type person, and then that person could go investigate, and Ashley would be, Ashley would not have any sort of, you know, exposure.
Repercussion, or exposure. Yeah, that is.
Well, that would, that would be you, I think.
Yeah, I think that would kinda fall in the lap that he has before.
I think it would fall on, I think that would fall onto you, and Ashley, Ashley would be out of it.
Right.
Yeah.
But probably, the process would be, so Ashley reports it to you, you still go to the. Elected or the, um, department head.
Yeah.
And they deal with it there first.
Even if it isn't the department head, doesn't matter, yeah.
Cause they need to, yeah, seems to me, they need to deal with it with their department head first.
Follow their chain of command, and.
And then if it goes, it goes further, then it probably ends up in your office.
Right.
And then the possibly Personnel Board.
Mm-hmm. Would agree.
Is that what this policy allows for?
Yes, well, I mean, not in so many words, if you want to do, file it. What's the word we just used, anonymous?
Complaint.
Do you think that's important to put that out there?
The only time it says, it does stay anonymous once it goes past, like I said, they file a grievance, and, uh. Then you go in labor management discussion, then that confidentiality goes away. Because without that, you'd have no proof.
But up until, I think what the, the point he's making is if somebody knows, like, somebody in my office is talking about something they shouldn't be.
They can make an anonymous.
But they could let Lisa know.
Charge. Right.
Rather than me, and then I, I see Lisa letting me know. And us talking.
And then it stays, stays confidential unless.
Unless the individual wants to file a grievance against the write-up.
Then that confidentiality goes away.
Not necessarily.
What, which part?
Then the person who made the original grievance can still remain anonymous.
No, no, they can't.
I would hope so. I see them as still.
Yeah.
No, they can't because they have to have proof that who made the allegation.
Hmm, I didn't know that.
That's true.
Yeah, they have to prove who made the allegation.
At least they're making you aware.
That's just like you going to court, if somebody says you said this, even though this person, yeah, they did say that, they have a right to know.
They have a right to.
Well, this is our.
Well, it, I, I think, I think it depends on how far, how far it goes. If, if somebody is, if somebody says that, that Lisa said this about this, and you're confronted, did you in fact say all of this? You've done your, somebody else has done the investigation, and they found out that, yes, you did in fact say what that is, doesn't matter who said it over here. Investigation was done, it was determined that you did. Do what, what was said over here, whether this person is entered or not, now it may come a time where you deny it. And this person needs to be brought in to say, yes, I did hear or say this, then at that particular point, then, then it would be necessary.
Thankfully, it doesn't come up a lot, but.
Well, and some of these things may not ever be black and white. Many times then, they could be, end up a gray area, that one side says one thing, another side says another. And then someone has to, um. You know. The, in this case, the. Elected official or their boss would have to make some kind of a reasonable, um, decision as to what they think really happened. I mean, they get put in the position of being the judge.
Right, the good thing that we have, and, and I, we've been down this road enough times, Lisa uses Pam Horn enough to make one phone call and.
Right.
Get everybody back on the right, on the right road.
One touch dial.
Right, if it ends up going that far, and, um.
We have enough assets.
And I think, I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know of a, a number of significant issues in this area. That, um, we have to, um. Go step by step by step by step of exactly what we have to do. But, um, certainly, it's, it's a significant issue that, again, you have lots of, um. We have a whole lot of things that's public information. But then there's some things that are at least assumed to be private, and some things that should be private. And so, um, it's a, it's a little bit, you can see where an employee might. Get sidetracked, they may have inadvertently said something that they shouldn't have. But to me, the first level of defense there is their supervisor, their boss, to go over stuff with them and figure out.
Investigation and figure out what happened, what was said, why, yeah.
Figure out the story.
And that's what this allows, or the way I see it.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval then?
I move that we approve, uh, eighteen hundred point zero zero one, the what is expected of you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Yes, next item, discuss, consider approval of the one percent restricted funds authority for the budget year twenty twenty three, twenty four.
This is, um, always a challenge to get through this discussion, this has to do with our LID. Which, um, as I, as I understand the LID, we are. Allowed what, growth of two and a half percent to not go into the pink postcard, or we are allowed a certain levy, fifty cents of which a certain portion is, we share, okay? But if you have a lower levy, which maybe you have all put us in this situation, we can request more by going through the LID process. LID exemptions, if you have a capital project such as Highland Road. Where you can request more money, but you have to have money in reserve through this restricted funds authority that we've put ourselves, we've allowed ourselves the extra percent every year. To say that we gar, we have enough, sorry, now I can't pull it up, that we have not used this option. So that we can exercise it for a big project. And I'm not saying we're doing it this year, but this is another piece that I can put in that LID exemption form that I have to provide as part of my, um, budget pa, package. So I'm asking you for the approval to the, to apply the one percent, cause I don't remember my number from last year, did I give you a copy of last year's paper, I didn't, did I?
Yeah.
Just, I just have a copy of the actual resolution. And, yeah, right now I'm gonna be.
I think you're having network issues, I was having internet issues.
Okay, I can pull the information and show it to you, it was, I think we have a very healthy. Amount stored up because, but we haven't been able to exercise it because our levy has been high. And this, we're bringing it down, bringing it down, so possibly you could come up with another, if you waited a year for Highland or something, we could apply this. But you have two years to do the project, and if you don't, you have, and we would be taxing more dollars. And if we don't finish the project, we have to pay back a certain sum of the money that we've taxed, so. That's, that's the gist of this, as I'm going to explain it to you. Can't even show today. So we've, and like, I get to use Charlie's statement every year, if we don't continue to grow it, we fall behind. It could cause us to fall behind, which Scotts Bluff County falling behind, we've never been able to really exercise this additional authority. Because of our high levy, so. And I'm like, and they had a great explanation in my. Out of workbook that I didn't bring that in here today, so. And I'm like, and they had a great explanation in my audit workbook that I didn't bring that in here today, so.
I believe in the past, we've approved it with the thought that. Um, if there's a, some kind of a emergency or, um, disaster of some type.
That we can leverage.
That maybe we would, um, want to be able to access those funds.
Yeah, and like I said, we've built it to where now your levies, maybe we could do that.
And to me, if we're talking about using it for that type of. Expenditure, then I'm not having a problem with that. Now, again, it could get, um, we could start to use it for, I'm gonna call it. Regular expenses, and if we did, then I would be concerned about.
Well, they talk, it's capital improvement stuff, they specifically put into the directions, don't use it for a motor grader. But do use it to repair a bridge, to fix a certain portion of highway, put windows in the.
What does it say about windows?
Or something like that, I guess, some sort of capital project you're going to do that you will complete. But like I said, I'm not asking for the authority to put towards any project this year, but I'm just asking for us to include this in our LID exemption work paper that is filed.
Might need to do a restart, to be honest.
What are you trying to pull up?
Um, my like last year.
Oh.
File or even.
I cannot help you. I was like, I got this.
And it does require a seventy-five percent majority vote or four out of five of us.
And it is just a calculation at this point that we have done. So, if you have real concerns, I can give you the documentation, we do probably have one more meeting that we could postpone until, towards of which I've gotta schedule our budget hearings. I don't see a real need to have the budget hearings real early if I can't file my budget till the thirtieth. I mean, it's not due, so I would think we could have it either the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth if you would come in on the twenty-fifth.
That, that's coming up on the agenda here in a little bit.
Is it? Oh.
Well, continued budget discussion and my plan was hoping that we could pick a date.
I'm not gonna be here the twenty-fifth.
September, aren't you?
So if we vote for this, does it automatically increase the tax then?
No.
No, it's all part of this LID exemption and you would have to know that we have a capital improvement we're applying it towards.
It's only if we. Right.
And I've done that.
So actually, it's not for this year.
Right.
It's actually, we're approving, we're approving the LID for this year, and if we wanted to go back and redo our budget and all that stuff, then we could, we could.
Apply a project.
Access.
To ask, we could tax ask to.
Increase that.
Increase.
Yeah.
By, by the amount that we increased the LID, but what we're doing here.
I still think that would take you to the pink postcard meeting, that's what I.
Oh, it sure would.
It, it would, but then I guess you could say, we're doing this project.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just threw that out there, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But what the LID does is, it just, you know, we just, we bump it one percent every year so that if there is that opportunity in the future or necessity. I guess is a better word, to do it in the future, to access that money in the future, or to tax for that money in the future, then we have that authority. Otherwise, we don't have the authority to, um, ask for it. And it is recommended by NACO that we do this each year.
And it, it seems like we have done it.
You have, every year.
We have.
Every year.
But, and I, again, I think as long as we have a conservative group up here that would only use it in the case of. Being, in my opinion, a disaster or a highly critical need.
And I would assume it's something they, that is brought before you before it's spent on top of, get the approval so we can do it, but then she'd bring it before you again.
Which, which, yeah.
With the need if we had it.
Exactly, yeah.
This is my last year form, total restricted funds from line ten of last year's LID computate, computation form, thirteen million ninety thousand. And then we do two point five percent is the allowable, and, gosh, I thought this is where it was, now I thought you could do the one percent.
Wow.
Additional one percent approved increase, didn't put it in last year.
But we have it.
Did we? I, I, I can't explain that, but anyway, total unused restricted funds authority is one. Less, okay, thirteen million less restricted funds from the LID supporting schedule, total unused restricted funds authority is one point four million, so that'll continue to grow if we do that one percent.
To be honest, I don't think we did the LID last year.
You don't think we did it? No, appears we didn't.
I thought, I thought we did.
I know we've done it each of the, each of my previous years, but I don't, I, for some reason, I just don't recall doing it last year.
Well, you know what, this was the year before, maybe I pulled it the wrong year, no, just to make us even more confused. But twenty-two, twenty, that would be this year. And I had to write one out. Yeah, yeah, and this is the form, one of the forms I have to fill out, total LID exemptions, or is that where my? You don't think we passed it last year though, huh, that would. Solve a lot of our problems, but this is where I put it in, additional one percent board approved increase. But we didn't do it, so we're sitting at two and a half percent allowable dollar amount of increase to restricted funds, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, total restricted funds authority. So, I believe that's the number I would pull forward this year. So, like I said, if you have, huh. So that's the number I pull forward, thirteen million four one seven this year, and we go through the whole computation again. Anyway. I don't have any more to say about it, but that's.
Okay, what's more's pleasure? Have a motion for approval?
I'm a little concerned suddenly. If you go down one more page. Current year allowable increases. So if we add that additional one percent board approved increase.
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna change that two point five percent there to three point five.
To three point five, so we could increase our restricted funds authority, which ultimately goes in total unused restricted funds and.
But if we do that, we're not necessarily increasing our tax ask, right?
No, we are not.
Okay, and our two point five five, five five percent growth that would try to stay under is, is still intact.
Mm-hmm. That was on another page. Yeah, this is where, last year we went prior year property tax ask, the two point five nine that we are allowed to increase. Last year's property tax request authority was thirteen, three, twenty-two.
And that amount continues to grow?
This year we get an increase in another two point five percent, five five percent, if we recruit, increased it more. Then we would have to go to the joint public hearing. That was, this is the page I do to tell us whether we go to joint public hearing.
Right.
Has nothing to do with that LID exemption, exception exemption stuff.
No, I'm saying that this one percent, um. Would, would that, um, amount continues to grow. Um, even if, I mean, if we don't use it, it continues to grow.
Yes.
Over time.
Yeah, that's what I say, I have that in my budget, or my budget book from Latin, that they've, the APAs provided, auto to republic accounts. Has shown, if you've taken it, here's where your authority would be, if you didn't, it would be here, and the difference over however many years. Was significant, but like I said, other years, we've been at the top of our levy, you couldn't take it if you wanted to because there was no, you were already maxed out.
Maxed out already. The, um. Alright, so what's starting to bother me now is, again.
Well, then, just.
I'm not worried about this group that's up here.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm enabling a future group that may not have the same thoughts.
Well, don't, don't do it.
I'm, I'm giving them additional.
Well, just do two and a half percent again.
So.
Well, that's, the way I thought the levy work was, or the LID work rather, is, is. We could go one percent above the levy. If we increase this LID, but if we're not, but if we're considerably under the levy limit, then we don't need that LID growth.
Potentially you could, if you could go up, but you never can go over the disaster, that was my understanding. So if you have a levy up here and wanna, and have a project that you wanna go a little more, well, you're still gonna hit the ceiling and you can't go up. But now we're bringing our levy down, and maybe we could do that if we had a special need. So it was more for those who had levies in the point twos to point threes, that they would be able to apply the LID exceptions.
Oh, okay. I got it, I got it.
At least that's my understanding and. Maybe we can get, we can get more explanation on it. If you guys wanna study, like I said, postponed it, postpone it.
Table till next meeting?
This won't hurt our budget one way or another, really, it's just like they said.
Okay, what do you wanna do, you wanna table it and discuss it some more?
Let's table it.
Alright, do I have a motion to table it?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Record your votes.
I don't know, I'm gonna click your one.
Your.
Alright.
Break in front of you.
Alright, we'll move on to the next item, receive inventories.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Receive inventories for treasurer, clerk of district court, region twenty-two, uh, central communication, district twelve probation, health department, general assistants. Received all of those, do I have a motion to receive those?
We received those.
They're electronic versions, I'm not making copies.
Yes, right.
And you are the one that keeps.
Yes.
That in the minutes or?
They're in the minutes, but the actual inventories, paper copies are in my office, but they are, every one of these that we've been receiving, all through the meetings. They've been in the electronic packet.
Good, that's fine.
Do I have a motion?
When I make a motion, we, uh, accept the inventories from the treasurer, clerk of district court, region twenty-two, central communication, district twelve probation, the health department, and general assistants.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
Five yeses?
Okay.
You hear it, Lisa?
I, depends on if you have questions, I don't have any updates.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was wondering if we could set the date though.
Oh.
I mean, continued discussion and consider action if we need to set a date, or do we wanna wait and do that next meeting too?
We probably need to get the date figured out.
Yeah, cause I need time to publish, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. So, my preference would be, um, sometime after the joint public hearing, of which, if you want, you want an update on that? Let's say we have four entities participating in the joint public hearing, so we need to hear from one, but, um. City of Geering, Geering Public Schools, Morrel Public Schools, and WNCC.
And Baird.
So everybody.
And Baird.
And Baird, okay.
Baird Schools.
Yeah, I guess they did that.
Why are they coming here?
Cause we, they're, they're in our, we've got residents in.
Part of their district is in our county.
Right.
That some kids in Scottsfield County go to Baird, is that what it's about?
I don't think it's cause people from here go there, I think cause they're part of.
That's right.
They're part of that school.
They dropped down into our county.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Right, but some of those kids certainly.
Could go there.
Go there, in that, yeah.
So, everybody in the county will get a card this year.
Every single buddy.
And some of you will get many, right?
Everybody will get one because.
WNCC.
Oh, yeah, okay, I understand.
Okay, so what date are we looking at?
I'm, I'm looking at either like twenty-first, twenty-second, I said the twenty-fifth, Charlie said he couldn't be here.
Of September?
Yeah, it's, I've gotta file by the end of that week, by September thirtieth.
And does it have to be a night meeting, is the other thing, you guys?
Yeah.
We could do a new meeting.
Sure.
Does that work for everybody? Okay.
Yeah.
So the twenty, twenty-first, or twenty-first you can't be here, Charlie?
I could do the twenty-fifth at noon.
At twenty-fifth at noon?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the twenty-fifth, is that alright with everyone?
I think so.
Okay.
Twenty-fifth noon, and that is, you'll get me what I need, cause we're gonna have to publish that big thing, right?
Yeah, okay.
Are you gonna be ready by then?
I have no choice, I have no choice, Kelly, I gotta get ready.
And what is that called, our budget hearing? And summary or?
And then, and, and the property tax request, setting the pop, property tax, I'll get you, we can go look at the.
The wording, okay.
Okay, move on, all business, anybody have anything, nothing on the agenda, have none, public comments? Anybody in the public, there's nobody from the public here. Board and staff reports?
Um, I did talk to NACO about the, uh. Tax sale issues that we're having across the country and the state of Nebraska, and NACO, the NACO board of directors gave. Direction to the NACO director to, um. Write an amicus brief on behalf of counties, municipalities, and, um, anyone, anyone affected by the tax sales, so. So that'll be a benefit, um. For the Supreme Court to take into, or the district court really, to take into consideration when they, uh, rule on this issue that we're gonna have. Um, and then also, John Cannon also said he would join us by phone. On the eighteenth to talk to us about the LID.
Really?
Process and why we should do it, or why we may not wanna do it. He's explained it in really plain, simple terms in the past, I just can't, I just don't get it.
We're talking about this issue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you could get him on the agenda for.
Please email me.
Okay. Mark, you have anything?
Um, just wanna confirm, so we're talking, our next meeting is September eighteenth at four thirty, and then we have another one September twenty-fifth at noon. And October second would be our normal meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, I attended the, uh, hospital board meeting. Very interesting, found out I was chair when I walked in the room, uh, first time, first meeting I've ever been to. I had no prior knowledge of what was going on, I totally walked in cold. I've left several messages for Mr. Holyoke. The only thing we really talked about, uh, the chairman told us what in great shape the hospital was in, went from fifty-four million to twenty-four million in the hole, and how good everything was going. Tried to ask a few questions, didn't get any answers, we didn't talk about the bonds at all, not one, not one thing about the bonds. I, I didn't know what questions to ask, cause I, that would've sounded really stupid, and then shortly after that, the newspaper article came out about all the bond stuff, and I was, I got a plethora of phone calls about it. Uh, again, left several messages, uh, got a return, well, just a little bit ago, from, I, I'm assuming it was Tom. And I'm, I'm glad you brought it up while these guys were here, I'd like them to come here and explain to everybody. We appointed two, two more board members, I have no idea how those appointments were made.
And this isn't the actual hospital board, but it's the, what do we call that?
Foundation board.
No, it's the hospital, county hospital.
Authority.
Which is the bonding.
It's a bonding, yeah, and, and it's established through this board years ago, years ago, and.
When did I send that to you guys?
A month ago, maybe, I read, I read through it and it's, yeah, I have no idea, really.
There, there is other information in that folder, but I didn't know what to look for too, so.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I could scan the whole thing for you guys if you want me to.
I did, I had a nice conversation with. Mike Downing, Mike's been on it for a while, and they, you know, they grade, they, they grade your ability to repay the bonds. I had questions of whether or not this board or individually were responsible if they opt not to pay, I, I have no idea. I don't think we are, but still don't know. So I'm, I'm working very diligently, trying to figure out what our role is and all this, what my role is and what this board's role is. And, and what that, what that whole board's role is. Supposedly they're, they're supposed to get reports anytime anything is done on those bonds. I've been chairman now for four years, five years, that's the first meeting that I've been to, so I don't know. But thank you, Charlie, for bringing that up, so hopefully we can, we can get to that. And get a little clearer explanation on, on what's all going on with that, it's an as needed board. So, I guess it was needed, that's, that's why I was there, so anyway, Mike, anything?
I did a tabletop exercise last Monday morning at Public Safety Building with emergency management. Several other agencies went through about four scenarios. That's about it.
Okay, press?
I think everything's pretty much been talked about, road bridge.
Okay, Lisa, you have anything else to bring up, Jean? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to move in.
I don't have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed you, it's been a long night, it's been a long day. Entertain a motion to move in executive session to discuss personnel issue and contractual discussion, and that meeting will be the board, Lisa and Jean. Move into executive session, oh, let's see, I need a motion first.
I will move in, I will move that we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Record your votes. We'll move to executive session at six forty-two. Yes.
Five yeses.
Well, that could go, because she said, Steve said that's all going to go to Westco, but where it goes in Westco, we might have something to say about that.
Alright, we're back in regular session at.
I would hate for Panhandle to expand out there.
At seven forty-eight. Call roll, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Here.
Blue?
Yes.
Any decisions?
Okay. Yes, a decision. Need a motion that we will pay. Oh, where's it at here?
Right, and so this is that item that was tabled, yeah.
Resorts.
Right.
Pay the bill to.
Yeah, Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue, in the amount of. Well, I lost it.
Seven four four seven.
In the amount of seven thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is that a motion?
That, I, I'm entertaining a motion.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, record your votes.
Just one moment, please, I'm sorry. Can I do a voice for?
Yes, go ahead.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
I, I didn't sign any of that stuff that was here.
You may have, I, I had, at least I take it with you guys, so we might have got it signed, I'll double check.
That's what we signed in.
Okay. Because I don't remember signing, it was laying here when I went to.
You signed it in the back room then.
You signed.
Oh, oh, that was the stuff back there, okay.
You were signing in the back.
Thank you, okay, alright, hearing no more business? Or adjourned?
Oh, we got a bike race this weekend.
We have a bike race this weekend, yes, we do, yes, we do. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you later, thank you, Kelly, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Kelly.
Lisa, we will see you tomorrow night.